Chip, if one of my citizen emails is a member of the commission and we just have a quorum, is that a thing? One of the members of the commission is one of my email comments on one of the public hearings. We have five, which is on...
Who will be here?
Yes. It's Mr. Borden who's on his way, so I'm not sure the way didn't ask you this when he got here.
He can ask the questions from here. When he's here, he can ask.
Can he vote?
Unless, for some reason, he can ask the questions, he'll vote if there's a great opinion he could.
Okay.
But I don't know what the question is, I don't know, but unless he has...he can ask, they all ask questions, so he can ask a question and he'll vote.
Okay.
Yeah, he's still, as a commissioner, can ask a question.
If he's got an interest in it, he can ask, he can think about it, but he can ask the question.
Okay.
All right, well then, I say let's go ahead and start. Karen, if you want to...
Okay, I just, yeah, Kim is saying she still can't hear, but let me see.
Well, he just got her though.
Yeah.
Okay.
She's about to hear now, so...
Okay, do you want to go item by item, or do you want to do the first part, how we're going to conduct the meeting with the commission?
So are you saying I should go ahead and read this first?
Well, no, just making them aware that we have a prepared statement and that...
Okay. Karen has prepared a statement that I'm going to read in the beginning explaining our procedure for today, and I will do that right after I call the public hearing to over, and then I'll go into my normal script after that. And that just talks about that we're staying twenty people in the room, staying six feet apart, and people can call in or email if they have comments.
And there may be a little bit of live time, you guys, because I've asked Kent to wait a few minutes after we open the public comment period, to allow people that are either outside or want to call in to be able to do that.
And if I get going too fast, y'all slow me down, just say, "Hold on."
Do we have a sign, do we know if somebody hanging around the lobby or outside?
There are sign-in, yes.
Okay.
We have two sign-in sheets, we put the email address out there pretty extensively.
Tom got it.
Tom, you can sit in that chair right there.
That's, uh, I was...
You're streaming it?
I just wondered if there's a live, yeah, I just wondered if there's a live time in there.
Okay.
Okay, let's just go through the agenda then.
Okay. The first item, you guys, on the agenda is an old certificate that we actually approved in 2018, but we've been asked to add an addendum to Unit 3, and this is to make some adjustments, or make some requirements that will be in effect so that we're sure that we're going to be meeting the needs of the neighborhood on the rezoning request we had on this property at the fairgrounds. I'll be reading all those conditions out loud during the meeting, and it is...
That's not the first, that's not the first thing.
You're right, okay. The first thing on my mind, let's talk about the first request, which is a pre-zoning request on the west side of McIntyre Lane. They are asking to pre-zone to R3 single-family. We've had three phone calls on this one, and actually a couple people we spoke to when we were delivering handbills, everyone was in favor, and actually were pleased that Mr. Littrell would be doing this instead of someone else. As you will recall, with a pre-zoning, once the pre-zoning is approved, they have 180 days to annex into the city limits, and that is in the legal notices, so...
Any questions?
Okay. The next item, on the north side of Point Mallard Drive, west of the golf course, they're asking to rezone to R5 from R3 to R5. This is part of what was known as Black Branch Point, but will be called Legacy Cove now. They are asking to rezone from R3 to R5 because they have some very irregularly shaped lots. The lots are not small so much as they are very narrow, or they're very, not narrow, but very square, and it's hard to make the R3 front and rear yard setbacks, as well as the side yards, although those are kind of, we can work on those. So they have suggested that they rezone to R5, which allows for a 25-foot rear. They will not be changing the plat to provide for smaller lots, and these lots are significantly larger than the minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet in R3 or 5,000 square feet in R5.
So there may be some concern that we're changing the values, and we're really not, because the lots are changing, from what I understand, the sale price of the lots are not changing, so it's not changing the value.
We have had one comment on this one, which I will reach you during the meeting. There is a gentleman worried about the value, so... The next three items, I hope we can talk about at one time, but they're three separate zonings because they're three separate zonings today. They're all on Pool Valley Road, on Central Parkway, north of Ryan Drive. It is also the layout plat we have for the Willshire Development, where they will be building or developing, let me look up...it's like 100, helps if you label your tabs.
What, are you looking for the total acreage?
Yeah, I'm looking for the total acreage and the number of lots. I've got little things, but...
I think you're right, I think it's like 165 and...
A layout approval to subdivide 38.03 acres into 129 R3 single-family residential lots. This will be workhouse housing, workforce housing, and a real, we think, a good step. The lots are all on the large size even, side even for R3. And that's, one is going, is a pre-zone, one is a re-zone from RMH, which is our manufactured housing zoning district, and the third one is a re-zone from M1 to R3.
So everybody understands that parcel that's on Central Avenue is the one that's a pre-zone, it's not in the city now, the rest of it already is?
1350, correct. And the only calls, we've gotten, actually, three calls on this one too, and they were all very positive.
And is all R3s?
Yes, sir. The next item is 135320, it's on the north side of Old Molton Road at the end of Brookline. It's a piece of property we recently annexed, and we are recommending a B1 zoning on it as it has a convenience store on it today, and that makes more sense than Ag1. The One to Cater Plan has it as mixed neighborhood, I believe, and a B1 is more like a mixed neighborhood than a lot of our other commercial zones. The next item is Manor Park. They are asking to subdivide, or for preliminary approval, to subdivide 4.97 acres into 12 single-family residential lots in a detention area, and we're working with the nearby property owners on drainage on that one. River Road Estates, which you will recognize, is part of Lot 2 of Morris Brothers Minor Plat. One thing we have asked the engineer to do is show us all of Lot 2 and label the areas that are not included in this actual plat as out parcels. They're asking to create 39 R6 semi-attached single-family lots and 67 R3 single-family residential lots. We have had one phone call on this one, they are concerned about drainage, and they are also very concerned about the access points and where they are on River Road, Old River Road, and that there are sufficient access points. So that's what we've heard so far from the neighborhood, and we do have an email, but it's fairly short. I have not been able to hear for sure from the lady that I've been talking to if she wanted us to call her or not, so we may hear from her for this meeting.
Karen, let me interrupt and go back to Manor Park. Did you say something about working out drainage, is that what you said?
There's some questions that we've had about the drainage at Manor Park, but Carl's...
I have some good with the engineers and I've dealt with a person that I guess that was creating, I think we did, but you had that work done.
Okay.
Thank you, Carl.
Sorry, thank you.
They're very scary.
Okay.
Might as well hold up, he's here, let him get in. We actually have plenty of time.
Where'd you see him?
He's coming, coming through security right now.
We were talking about Manor Park just a little bit, so I know that it's near and dear to your heart.
So why don't we just go back to Manor Park then? You have some comments on that, right? Just so you know, we're streaming live.
I did, and I talked with Carl about those, and it's about the drainage behind the existing. It comes out right there where the new subdivision is going to start, a new addition, and he's said he's made... said he's made comments with the developer, and that's going to be handled and straightened out. The issue's going to be straight.
Okay, so you're satisfied with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Before, do you think, did you have any questions on everything but for Manor Park?
No.
Okay. Do we need to go back and go over any of that?
No, no.
Then let's proceed forward.
Okay, what about River Road Estates? We did just kind of do an overgloss on that, but River Road Estates, we have had a phone call on from a nearby, adjacent property owner who lives directly across the street here, and she is asking about drainage for the subdivision. She's also asking about access points, where the access points will be, and making sure she's comfortable with it. We may or may not have her at the meeting, but we do have her comments to read during the email portion.
Okay, we do have a plat, and it shows us access points, and all the drainage goes into that retention to the south side, correct?
She mentioned that it was difficult for her to read the emails that were, the plats that were posted online, but I think she was trying to look at them in the agenda. We did actually post them separately, each one as a PDF, and when I emailed her the PDF, I think it went a little better. We also provided her with a copy of the original layout, which had a significantly, probably three times as much R6, and the new layout, which just has the strip that we're looking at today.
Okay, so this, this one has one entrance to, that's Old River Road, correct?
The, what we're looking at today has one entrance. There are also two entrances in the Morris Brothers subdivision, and there is one entrance to Deer Road in the Morris Brothers subdivision, that this subdivision will feed into Morris Brothers right here. It connects to Morris Brothers, then you'll be able to go out to Deer Road, or you'll be able to go out to Old River Road. And this is their access point onto Old River Road today, which is where they will likely start.
So these ties the two together, and then as far as drainage, I mean, there's nothing that's going to create a drainage problem across the street, correct? And I take it that drainage runs across River, it drains across River Road, right?
Correct, there's Covert, and just south of the church is out there, that all, all that currently next to it, and that, and that pond dumped into that ditch, and that is right close to the Covert Road, just south of the church.
So all the people from River Road back in, shouldn't be affected at all by any of this new development, as far as drainage is concerned.
Carl, will you talk a little bit about access to Old River Road Two, in case there are questions about that during the meeting?
To show in one of this plat, the other subdivision is connected to, has two other exits on there, so that would be three. I would think that would be plenty for the size of development this is.
What about the, the traffic on Old River Road?
Last time I counted, I didn't count, not too awful, I guess it's been a year ago now. I think there's existed 150 cars today, not Indian Hill. The MPO is looking at, they're doing the traffic study for the intersection at Indian, Upper River Road, Indian Hills, Upper River Road intersection, and when we get those comments back, we will be looking at those improvements somewhere in the future.
Thank you very much.
And Upper River Road and 67 is part of that as well?
It's, um, Upper River, um, Old River, not 67. Well, yeah, you're right, yeah, Upper River and 67, I think they're looking at that also.
Right. I think that's where a lot of the comments have been on that, so that, I just want to make sure that's part of that, that they're looking, that the state is looking at, correct?
Correct. The, or the traffic study being directed by the MPO.
Okay. So just to make it clear, since there's been a lot of comments about traffic, that after the state completes that, and then the city will take a look and decide what we need to do from then, from there. Okay. That's all I got.
Have we addressed everything at River Road Estates? Okay. You will recall that last month, we had a rezoning request at the fairgrounds, and the council requested that we go back and make some covenants or make some kind of arrangements with the property owner to make sure that the things that the neighborhood was questioning could be addressed as part of the process and a way to manage that and keep it, so we were aware of it. What we have recommended is that we do an addendum to Lot Three of Certificate 342818 that will require a landscape plan. It gives some standards for buffering and some landscaping standards, not a lot, but just kind of reflective of what the new zoning ordinance would have recommended, and it does establish that the owner of the property, shown as Unit Three, will be in charge of maintaining or responsible for maintaining the landscaping. We also make it clear in the conditions that a site plan drawn by a design professional shall be provided to the planning commission for approval, and we make a statement in there that vehicles are required, and this is a, vehicles will be, trucks will be required to use the truck route as designated by the city truck route ordinance, and shall use Fairgrounds Road to Modus Road. But, you know, we will make the truck drivers as aware of that as it is humanly possible to do, and we hope that they will do what we ask them to do, that there are consequences, certainly if a truck is not on a truck route, that will be discussed should that happen. And there are also provisions in that condition that should there be a change to the truck route, the new truck route will go into effect for this property, although I think really getting out of here anyway, but Fairgrounds Road to one of the nearby roads would be difficult. Last month...
And just to make sure, on the buffer on the east side, would be added as buildings are built?
Yes.
Or existing buildings are renovated?
Thank you, and I'll probably read that whole statement when we do it in the meeting, so I was talking from memory, you know, that you also reminded me of something else, so when you said that, there is an existing berm and buffer on the property today, and that buffer will be allowed to, will be encouraged to stay in place, and if changes are made, we've asked that we be given approval process, or part of the approval process.
Question, Karen, on the buffer, is this similar to what we're do, we did down at the MapCo area there where we created the buffer?
That's much, much tighter, so it's a little, it's similar in the requirements for maintenance and the standards that we're setting. The, the thing about the buffer at the MapCo site that you're talking about is that on Sixth Avenue, there's very little land, so we had to work with them to allow them to use some right-of-way and do some other things that were created there that we, this, this has a little more flexibility.
Yeah, they have, with this one, they have three options.
Yeah.
With buffer.
Yeah, and on that one, you, you just kind of have to go with the, go with what's there. Okay, also, on the consent agenda, Certificate 347520, we approved this last month, creating two lots that were about the same size or, and they have asked to not do them exactly the same size. They'll be creating a lot of 2.85 acres and one acre. We allowed them to just come back in and ask you to approve it with the new lot configuration as we had not finished it. The conditions are pretty basic, to signed sealed survey, a letter from the property owner, and a check made out to the judge of probate. We are on the consent agenda, by the way, now. The next item, 347720, they're taking, they're consolidating 2.78 acre lots into 1.56 acre lots. The applicant has been very concerned about meeting the conditions. I think they'll be done very quickly. The next item is in the planning jurisdiction, and they are asking to adjust the lot lines on a 13.28 acre tract to create two tracts of 9.29 acres and 3.99 acres. It was slightly different than that before, but I didn't write it down. Next item is also a certificate. It is to consolidate three lots on South Wood Trail Road Southwest into one lot that will be about 3.19 acres. The next item is the old Indian Hills Golf Course, and we've seen this a couple times recently. They're consolidating a lot of big tracts into one really big tract of 167.07 acres. This ensures that all the tracts have access to public services and are, and it's finally just getting it done and finished, so. The next item is just adjusting the lot lines on two lots on South Tappal Hill Road. They will end up with a 1.38 acre, 1.38 acre unit and an 11.16 acre unit. The next item is the plat that we just looked at the resignings for. This is the Willshire Development. It's east of Central Parkway, north of Ryan Drive. It will be 129 R3, single-family residential lots. Most of the property owners seemed happy. It is in keeping with the flex employ, there's, it has three future land uses on it right now, like it had three zonings. One was fixed flex employment, one was mixed neighborhood and residential load density, and we are recommending that we show it all as mixed neighborhood in the future.
And this is similar to the other, where it ties into the, the streets tie into the existing subdivision?
Two access points to this subdivision will be in the subdivision that is to the south, and they will use that, but the first access point, I believe they're planning on starting with, will be off of Central Parkway. And that's what you see up there on the screen, I just noticed that. That's what we've been told will be phase one. The next item is a site plan for Jackson Plumbing. They are building a 5,000 square foot storage building on a piece of property that has a building that's around 2,000 square feet, so it's actually a lot bigger than the existing building, and we're just doing site plan review on it at this point. So, questions?
Everybody's good?
Good.
All right. The only other thing we cover is next month's TRC and zoning, right? So that's April the 14th, and Mr. Borden, your schedule for zoning, and Mrs. Tate is for TRC.
Mrs. Tate just had hip replacement. I'm not, do we think she'll be up in...
I think she will. She told me, you know, she had to get replaced last month, but she had indicated that she was able to make this one.
And I've noted it on the vote sheet. Gary for zoning and Mr. Borden for zoning and Mrs. Tate for TRC. And you're, Mr. Borden, you know that zoning starts at 11?
Yes, ma'am. Got it on my calendar. Mr. Chairman, I may have a conflict in May for the TRC. It just depends on how travel goes over the coming days and weeks, if that's, we'll see how that plat will go. We'll leave the schedule for now, but I may come back to you.
All right. We've been able to move those around pretty easily, so it's, with that.
I do want to thank all of you for being here today. It's unusual times and an unusual situation, and we're managing through it, I think, pretty well. The governor's taken a really good stance on this, I think, and led us in a good direction.
This is the statement. I forgot she gave me copies for everybody.
Do you guys want to take a break, or...
I mean, we've got 30 minutes here, if anybody's...
I'm believing it's legal.
Hey, Chip, come here.
Yeah.
At least you didn't say you hate me, that's what I'm saying.
I think, I mean, there's no reason to sit here, stay in a meeting, right?
The plat and the city council, everybody would walk around with paint sticks.
So did Brad turn us off?
Uh, no, he's not here anymore, and I'm afraid to mess with the buttons, so...
The light's still showing.
Yeah. Hey, Wally, is Brad out there?
Hey, Wally. Right out there. Right out there.
Okay.
No, it's your cop.
Oh, okay. No, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, we have a preliminary plat done.
We have two preliminary plats.
And minor plat.
Plats that need actions.
Rezoning.
Because we've got...
Rezoning and a prezoning.
We've got this, yeah, we've got one of each.
Yeah. We do have a layout plat?
Yes.
We don't have a final plat, we have certificates to subdivide, and we have, we don't have any site permits.
Yes, we'll be at one.
Oh, Jackson. Jackson, okay. No annexation, no verification, no sidewall.
Do you want to talk about the addendum separately, or just try to explain?
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Wally.
Yeah, too.
I sent Brad, I said, "How do I cut this camera off, Steve?" I pulled every plug.
Oh, God.
I'll send it to the home.
Your, your mainstream.
But it's still running until we cut it off, I haven't spoken, Justin.
Yeah. But if they could turn it off, there's no use in leaving it on.
Yes, because the audio's still on, too, so.
Yes.
Well, I'm charging the actor's fees all the time, so maybe we'll turn it off.
What's with the play?
So, with what you're talking about, River Road...
It's just, it's an unusual way to do it, but Jeff doesn't come up with it.
I'll do my best. Go ahead, now, bless you. You're being less person than this.
Can you sign in, Ross?
Yeah. The, the only guy that's working the scene.
I see you can't.
Can you hear that one?
Yeah. They have a hall, but they got another hall for the...
Oh, that's what I'm saying, right?
Yeah, no. The mayor wants to... They've completely cut it off, that's what happened to them. I'm glad, actually, for the end of it.
Is it all survived?
As you're busy still, can't...
As you're busy still, can't.
It's, we're, we're moving through. This thing's still on.
Yeah.
But we've gone to, from the customers' call, and we get ready, take it out.
Yeah.
If somebody needs to come in, which is like one person at a time into the building, and it's worked good, really. Most everybody understands.
Yeah.
Now, some people still don't believe that it's an issue.
Yeah. I know our restaurants, they've made a lot of changes and sacrifices to do what they're doing, which is probably not enough.
Well, the first time I ever saw Waffle House closed was this morning. They went, you know, they've been doing takeout only.
Yeah.
Been going there at six and taking out, but this morning, they decided to go to that day shift only, so they're open till seven. And those people, you know, people working in restaurants, they're getting hurt.
Yeah. As I tell, our industry and everything is still going strong. Utility usage having fallen off and there.
Well, they really can't stop, can they?
Hey.
Yeah.
I had a question prior about running gas.
Where?
I get, you might ask him, cause I, I think he's out there.
What would you tell him?
He lives. If it was, if they were, he's, he's doing some work.
Yeah.
So, one, from town to town, I know they do.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Well, they ain't saying nothing except there's one case in Morgan County, but they won't say anything else about it. They won't say, "Do the, 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 the polish and the brooks." You still there?
We got to keep separation.
Okay, this being the time and place for the regular scheduled meeting of the City of Decatur Planning Commission, I'd like to call us to order. We are following the Governor's protocol for this meeting. There will be no more than 20 people in the room at one time, and we will maintain a six-foot separation. This will necessitate some unusual steps and time lapses. Please bear with us as we navigate through this process and try to maintain safe and open communications throughout. We will be asking for public comments via phone. We will give the number prior to public comment period, prior to the public comment period, and wait for three minutes to allow you to call or us to call citizens. Please email us a phone number if you would like to, like us to call you. This may be better so that you do not experience any busy signals or call in after the comment period. We will make accommodations to allow for these comments. The email is planning@decatur-al.gov. That is planning@decatur-al.gov. After the public comment period is started, I will ask Mrs. Smith if she has any email comments, and she will read them and allow for response. Some of the responses may be from people not in the room but watching. We will either call them and allow them time for them to come into the meeting, or call them and allow them to comment via phone. Items on the consent agenda will be read as a group, and a comment period will be started when we are done with that. Okay? Please, and I'm going, when she calls a roll, I'm going to ask each commissioner if you'd identify yourself so people watching will know who you are.
Mr. Lawrence.
I'm here, Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Borden.
Here.
Mr. Wynn.
Here.
And Mr. Culpepper.
Here.
And Mr. Pike. I almost forgot one.
I did too. Okay, so we do have a five-member quorum. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of last month's meeting? Okay, do we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as stated?
Motion to approve.
All in, okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We will vote on each item. Let me start over. Each item will be read separately and voted on after comments and discussions. If you wish to comment on an item, we ask that you call 256-341-4715. That is 256-341-4715. When you call in, please state your name, home address, including the city, if you're from out of town, and then make your comments. Okay, Mrs. Smith, as we would read the first case, please, on the public hearing.
Portion of the agenda. The first item on the public hearing portion of the agenda is pre-zoning request 1348-20. The applicant, applicants are Rich and Amanda Littrell, representing Littrell Development. They are asking to pre-zone a 10.97 acre tract to R3 Single Family Residential. Property is located at 2,204 McIntyre Lane. It is in a single fa- or it's in a, the proposed land use for this area is single-family residential. The One Decatur future land use for this area is mixed neighborhood. McIntyre Lane is the neighborhood collector. The zoning committee and the planning staff recommend approval of this pre-zoning request. It will allow for future residential development as recommended in the One Decatur Comprehensive Plan. And we'll turn it back over to you.
And one point of information?
Well, there is one point of information that if there are any relocation of utilities, they will be done at the owner's expense.
Okay, if we have anyone from the public that would like to speak to this case, if you're at home, you're, or at your office, you can call in 256-341-4715, and we will wait for three minutes from, for any calls. And if there's someone present that would like to speak to that, you're welcome to come to the podium at this time.
I do have an email requi- or comment.
Okay.
This comment is from Mr. Henry Latham. He was a delight to speak with and was struggling, he's battling lung cancer. So, he apologizes at the beginning for sounding rude on the phone. So, "Thank you, don't mean to sound rude on the phone, but I talk with an artificial voice and battling lung cancer now. But Rich Littrell is a good person and I approve his zoning. My house backs up to this property. I would like to participate via email just to keep up with what's going on. Thank you, Henry Latham, 2601 Berkshire Way, Southwest, Decatur, 35603." He currently lives in Windsor Place.
And that's the only email that you have to read?
That is the only email comment we've gotten where they wrote it down. We have had two or three other phone calls, as well as talking to people in the neighborhood, and everyone was in favor of the rezoning.
And we still have a couple of minutes to wait. You have a time, Matt? All right.
Thank you, Matt.
We need the music.
Will we be consolidating 1350 through 1352?
Excuse me?
Will we be consolidating the?
What I would recommend we do on those three requests, 1350-
Through 52.
Is that we discuss them all as a group and then vote on them separately. Because you're zon- you're going from three different zonings.
What's your time, man?
Two minutes, forty seconds.
Three minutes is a long time. Okay, obviously, we, we don't have anyone wishing to call in, so I would ask, do we have a motion to recommend to council to approve this zoning?
Motion for approval? Second?
We have a motion by Mr. Pike and edited, seconded by Mr. Borden. Please call the roll.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Borden?
Yes.
Winn?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Pike?
Yes.
Okay, that one is approved to be recommended to the council. We'll move to the next case, please.
Okay, bear with me, I'm not used to doing the votes. The next item on the agenda is rezoning request 1349-20. The applicant is Puyright McAnally, representing Greystone Properties. They are asking to rezone a 29.64 acre tract from R3 Single Family Residential to R5 Single Family Residential Patio Homes. They are not asking to change their plot at all, and we do not anticipate them doing that. The property is located on the north side of Point Mallard Parkway, west of the golf course. It is currently vacant. The plant, proposed land use is residential. The One Decatur future land use is riverfront mixed use, and the Point Mallard Drive is a city connector. The zoning and planning staff recommend approval, zoning committee and planning staff recommend approval of this rezoning request. It will allow for future residential development and support the riverfront mixed use recommendation by the One Decatur Comprehensive Plan. It will also extend the R5 Single Family Patio Home zoning, already approved, to the south and better allow the siting of residential structures on the irregularly shaped and narrow lots. And this is recommended for approval.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that would wish to comment to this? If so, you can call 256-341-4715. And if you have any emails while we're waiting on calls?
I do have two emails on this one. They are both from the same gentleman. And also, the applicant and his representative are present. We have an email from them giving us the phone number, so. And I'm looking for it. The first email is from Mr. Gerald Maxwell. He is at 1201 Regency Boulevard, and he is, he says, "I say the rezoning should not happen. Parker Real Estate originally proposed this as a high-end R3 Single Family home district. Now they want to lower the standards and rezone to as R5 Single Family Patio Homes, which will only reduce our property values. Since I live directly across from this fiasco, this can only further reduces my property value. In addition, as I pointed out during the last planning commission hearing, there is a superfund site between the area and the former GE plant, and that is why they never expanded into this area. Since the planning commission is likely to approve this for the tax income, they must also have Parker Real Estate have a bold and larger font of any sales that there is a superfund site nearby, and it has the possibility of seeping into the ground area. Otherwise, they have extensive liability. Also, since the planning commission has been made aware of this as a potential issue, they too are also now liable." Mr. Maxwell followed that up with this email. "Yet the R5 also provides for cheaper housing, lowering our property values, and does not meet their original intent of high-end homes. If odd-shaped lots, then they should have, first, should have accounted for that originally and said, 'We intend to build cheap patio homes and not high-end family homes.' And they can always provide larger lots for the high-end family homes and charge a little more. They and the city must still inform buyers of the superfund site nearby, and the city must continuously monitor the river for any effluence, while both Parker Realty and the city should set aside an additional fund once any leakage, should, once any leakage from the site is discovered. Otherwise, you will have something far beyond the 3M issue on your hands." And that's the second response we got from this gentleman.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this? Mr. McAnally?
Blake McAnally, Puyright McAnally, 310 Eighth Avenue Northeast, representing the applicant. First off, there is no superfund site in Morgan County. Period. Superfund site is a site that is on the CIRCLA list of EPA. It is a site that is been designated as having hazardous waste that is set to be cleaned up either by the generator or by the EPA using superfund, which is really a nickname for CIRCLA site. If you go to the EPA site and you do a search for superfund or CIRCLA sites, superfund sites in Alabama, you'll find about 10 or 12. There are none in Morgan County save the Tennessee River, where DDT was put in the river back in 1971 by the Olin Company over in Madison County. But there is none on Madison County proper. The use of the word superfund site is improper and might well be liable in this instance. I hate to be that direct, but that is a fact. This property has been tested. It has been found clean. There is property of which public records that I have researched, and Mr. Maxwell can research, anyone can research, through ADM or EPA, and you can find public records that identify sites nearby and what's going on with those sites. There are nothing of the, anything that he describes on this property. Everybody knows well that there is a manufacturing concern immediately adjacent. There have been manufacturing concerns on that site since the 1950s. There were some activities that took place on that site from 50 up until early 1970s. Those sites were closed. The EPA gave a grant to the state of Alabama in 1985 to go around and inventory any old landfill sites that they had knowledge of and do testing on these sites. That happened in this general area. Basically, after the testing was done on the site, a letter was put on file that I actually reread again today that said, "No further action was required by the Alabama Department of Environmental Management on the property nearby here." Nothing has ever been found to be anywhere near a CIRCLA or superfund site on this property. That's what I had to say with respect to the superfund comment. With respect to the rezoning from R3 to R5, the rezoning was done before the design, the pre-zoning was done before the design was undertaken. When the design was undertaken, we discovered that these lots were going to be very deep. These lots acreage-wise, square-foot-wise, are much larger than most anything in Point Mallard. But they are long and somewhat narrow. So, what this affords is one extra foot of width, because R3 is eight and six, R5 is eight and five for side yards. Now, on the front and rear yard setbacks, there's 10 feet less, which allows for a longer, more narrow home to sit 10 feet closer to the front and 10 feet closer to the back. We published the plat, and the layout plat, we have published the plat with the preliminary designs. The lot sizes have never changed. They will not change, they could not change and be replatted final without coming back before this body. It is not the intent of the developers to change the lot sizes. With respect to the last question, you can look up appraisals on property along Regency, and my simple math shows me that the cost of the dirt for a lot in this subdivision along the waterfront will be in excess of 50% of the value of the homes that exist in that neighborhood today, along Regency. And that, again, public information. So, just wanted, I think I've addressed three different areas. Have any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
So, anyone on the commission have a question for Mr. McAnally? Okay, have we allowed three minutes for, okay?
Ken, the lady has looked at the same issue, and we don't see any liability issues.
Okay. And I will state that I personally went on the EPA site myself today, and it's not listed as a superfund.
Do you mind going there and saying that so Ken can hear you?
Yes.
Yep.
Just to repeat, Chipotle Dinner with the legal department, Mr. Marx and I reviewed this, and we don't see any legal liability for the city in this action.
Okay. Any, I know, being no further comments, do we have a motion to recommend this rezoning to the city council?
Motion for approval?
Second.
And we have a motion by Mr. Pike, and a second by Mr. Winn. Please call the roll. Any, any comments from commissioners, question? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Borden?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Okay, we will pass this on to the city council with our recommendation. Okay, the, the next three cases, we will, they're all pertaining to the same subdivision, so we're going to read each case, and then we'll open up for a comment at one time. We will vote on each one individually, but we're just going to have one comment session for all three.
Okay. The first one is rezoning, or pre-zoning request 1350-20. The applicant is Puyright McAnally, representing Willshire Development. They are asking to apply an R3 Single Family Residential Zone to a 4.63 acre tract on the, on Central Avenue, which is a city connector, on the east side of Central Avenue, north of Pool Road. The next one of these is 1351-20. They are asking to rezone 20.9 acres from M1 Light Manufacturing to R3 Single Family. The property is located north of Ryan Drive and east of Central Avenue. The next one is a request to rezone 12.5 acres from RMH Single Family Manufactured Housing to R3 Single Family Residential. And all three, the zoning committee and the planning staff recommend approval of this rezoning request. This will allow for future residential development as recommended by the One Decatur Comprehensive Plan. This is part of a future development, or future residential development as recommended, this is part of a larger new residential development called Willshire, and should be zoned to support it. Sorry about that, got lost. They are proposing approximately 167, single-family resident, or 129, single-family residential lots.
Okay, so basically, there are three tracts of land. The first piece is not currently in the city limit, so that is a pre-zone request. The next two are already zoned, well, one is R3 and one is M1. So, they're all asking to be rezoned and pre-zoned to R3. If anyone from the public has a comment they would like to make at this time, you can call in 256-341-4715. And we will allow three minutes for you to call in with your comment. Do you have any emails on any of these?
I do not have any emails on these requests. I will say that we've had approximately three phone calls from nearby residents in the residential area along Ryan Drive. All of them were very positive and pleased to be hearing about this happening, so.
Okay, is there anyone in the chamber that would wish to speak to this? Okay, then we'll just allow the three minutes for anyone to call in. And also remind you, if you'd like to email us your phone number for us to call you, email at planning@decatur-al.gov. Okay. So, first we'll, first off, is there any comments or questions that anyone on the commission would like to make? And then first, I entertain a motion on 1350 for a pre-zoning recommendation to the council.
Motion to approve?
And the motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Borden, and a second by Mr. Culpepper. Please call the roll.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Borden?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Okay, now, we need a motion on 1351-20 for a rezoning recommendation to the council.
This is for a rezoning of 20.5, nine acres from M1 Light Manufacturing to R3 Single Family Residential.
Okay. Motion for approval? And the motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Borden, and a second by Mr. Culpepper. Please call the roll.
Not my skill, I'm sorry. Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Borden?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
And Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Okay, then last is case 1352-20 to rezone 12 and a half acres from RMH Single Family Manufactured Housing to R3 Single Family. Do we have a motion to recommend this to the council?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Pike, and a second by Mr. Winn. Please call the roll.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Borden?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to the next case, please.
This is a request to apply a zoning to a newly annexed piece of property, 12.5 acre piece of property to the city of Decatur. Property is located at 2614 Old Molton Road. It is on the north side of Old Molton Road, right where Blue Rock Line intersects it. The property is currently being used for a convenience store. The recommendation for the future land use was mixed neighborhood, and Old Molton Road is a city connector. We are recommending a B1 zoning be applied to this property. The zoning committee and planning staff recommend approval of this zoning request. It will allow for future small-scale neighborhood businesses as recommended in the mixed neighborhood future land use shown in the One Decatur Comprehensive Plan. And the point of information is that any relocation of utilities will be at the owner's expense.
If there's anyone that would like to make a comment on this case, the number is 256-3417, I'm sorry, 4715. We will allow three minutes. Are there any emails that we pursued on this case?
No, we have heard nothing on this case. The property owners are very anxious to get the zoning applied, that we have heard from them quite often.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this case? Okay, we will wait for phone calls. And they don't hold music, did I forget? They don't sing. Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any questions or comments from anyone on the commission? If not, do we have a motion to recommend to the council that they apply B1 zoning to this request?
Motion for approval?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pike, and a second by Mr. Borden. Please call the roll.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Borden?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Okay, that completes the zonings, pre-zonings, and rezonings portion of the public hearing. Now, we have two plat reviews.
These are both for preliminary approval, which, which is the stage at which we do the public hearing for a subdivision of property. The first one is Manor Park Phase 2. The applicant is Cleat Blankenship, representing PNC Real Estate Development. They are asking to subdivide, for preliminary subdivision approval, to subdivide a 4.97 acre tract into 12 single-family lots and a detention area. The property is located at the end of Aspli Lane Way and east of South Chapel Hill Road, south of Old Vineyard Road, southwest. It is in a single-family residential area. The current zone is R3 Single Family Residential. The One Decatur future land- The One Decatur future land use for this area is Rural Edge Agricultural. Aspli Way is a local street. South Chapel Hill Road is a neighborhood connector. We have four conditions and three points of information. We need to provide, they need to provide us with a copy of the D. A plat application fee for 13 lots times $5 is equal to 165, or plus $100 is equal to $165. They need to show a temporary turnaround for Aspli Way and a 10-foot drainage utilities and telecommunications easement 10 feet either side of the north property line of Lot 36, subject to approval of Decatur Utilities. There are three points of information, that any relocation of utilities will be at the owner's expense. An abstract will be required when the final plat is submitted, and recording fees will be required when the plat is ready to record.
Hey, for anyone from the public that would wish to speak to this case, please call 2563414715. Okay, did we receive any emails?
No, sir, we didn't. Well, we had a couple of questions about drainage, but I believe they've been resolved.
Okay.
All my comments for that, Mr. President. I did have a comment about the existing drainage in the existing subdivision there that's already there. And I talked with Mr. Pruitt at the Engineering Department. He has already made comment to that before I called him. And just talked with the developer there, and he's assured that the drainage will be taken care of in this development. So I feel good with that.
Okay. Is there anyone that's here that would wish to speak to this case? We'll wait for the time to run out.
I'm glad we cut it from five minutes to three.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, really.
Maybe next time we go to two.
I'm gonna recommend one to the city council.
Okay, any questions or comments from the commission? Or do we have a motion to recommend approval?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pike, second by Mr. Wynn. Please call the roll.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Borden?
Yes.
Mr. Wynn?
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Pike?
Yes.
And that, that was for preliminary approval, right?
Right, preliminary approval. Manor Park Phase Two.
The next item is a request for preliminary approval to create 39 R6 semi-attached single-family residential lots and 67 R3 single-family residential lots. The property is located outside of the city, but a pre-zoning is in process right now to rezone to R3 single-family residential zone and R6 single-family semi-attached residential zone. The applicant on this is Puyright McAnally, representing Morris Holdings. They are, the property is located north of Upper River Road between Deer Road and Old River Road. The, the proposed land use is single-family residential mixed density. The One Decatur future land use is mixed neighborhood. The One Decatur street topology is Upper River Road and Old River Road, and are both, both are neighborhood connectors. There are seven conditions from one point of information. The conditions are payment of the application fee of $555 to show all of Lot 2 of Morris Brothers Minor Plat and label the out parcels and to provide a lot number for the drainage area. To show Deer Road or indicate its location and the distance to it. To provide street names. Approval and completion of the rezonings and annexations subject to approval of the city engineer and subject to approval of Joe Wheeler Electric Co-op. The recommendation, the point of information on this is that any relocation of utilities will be at the owner's expense.
If anyone from the public would wish to comment on this, you can call 2563414715. Do we have any emails for this?
We have one email. So glad you prompted me. This is from Lyle Blythe, and she lives on Old River Road. I do know, I have her, she's right across from the entrance to the subdivision. Hi Karen, we still can't read the map that was sent to us or the online version. What do you suggest besides coming to the office? We did email her a PDF version of the plat, and she was able to read it. We also provided her with the layouts. We believe that this meeting during this time should be illegal because everyone can come and everyone, because everyone can come and everyone affected wasn't notified. We are worried about the drainage on the subdivision side once there isn't much permeable ground. We are also concerned about the farm road that is already being used as an entrance. Really, we are, we are concerned about anywhere on that hill and curve being used as an entrance. It is very dangerous, and there is no lighting, and the road is a paved county road barely 18 feet wide. Would you send me the link to the live stream of the meeting? Stay safe, Mrs. Blythe. We did respond to her and provide her with better copies of the plats and were, you know, spoke with her a couple of times about that. She still did have some concerns the last time I spoke to her about.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this? Yeah, I would, if you would, please.
Carl Pruitt, the city engineer. The drains for this subdivision, I guess, both Morris subdivisions, I guess drain south into a large detention pond, which will handle all the drainage before it enters, I guess, the large, existing drainage ditch that goes under Upper River Road or Old River Road, excuse me. So I don't have a big concern about the drainage. And as far as entrances, I guess, between the two subdivisions, there's three exits into Old River Road, which should be adequate for the houses that are there. As far as Old River Road itself, at Old River and Up River, the NPO is studying that intersection as far as getting recommendations. And at that time, the city will entertain a project or funding a project to try to improve that intersection. And over time, if, if Old River Road needs improving, we can look at that, at that time.
Okay. Does anyone have a question for Mr. Pruitt? Okay. She mentioned the legality of this meeting. Would you address that?
The planning department's good about giving the required notices. Ran the paper, ran the handbook for giving, letter for sent. And the, we are in compliance with the governor's restrictions on how to conduct this meeting, so we're confident that it's good to go forward.
Blake McAnally, Puyright McAnally, 310 Eighth Avenue Northeast. Just wanted to make one comment with respect to the R5 and the R6. We did have a public meeting at the chamber even before the first plat was filed with all of these people. I know Mr. Blythe was also there. There were probably 75 or 80 people from the neighborhood in attendance. And we showed a map that had, I can't remember the exact number, but it was 60 or 70 townhome lots. We heard what they said that day, and the developers are choosing to cut that number down. We're down at 36, so we're about half of what we originally proposed. It's, it's a very small amount, primarily single-family home all through. Just wanted to point that out.
And they're, actually, they're all single-family homes, R3 and R6.
Not connected homes.
Right. But single-family. Okay, so we're over the time. Any comments or questions from the commission? Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Borden and second by Mr. Culpepper. Please call the roll.
Just a minute. Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Borden?
Yes.
Mr. Wynn?
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Okay, now we will move into the consent agenda. This is the part of the agenda the planning commission has the final decision on and does not require a public hearing. These items are read together and voted on as a group. We have layout plaits, give a general idea of the lot layout for a subdivision. Certificates to subdivide. This is an expedited procedure to make adjustments to lot lines when there are three or less parcels involved. Site plans, proposed developments on a collector's street or above. Plans show building placement, parking, circulation, landscaping, et cetera. The same, if you wish to comment on any of these, on these cases after they are all read, you can call in to 2563414715. You agree?
Okay, and the first item on the consent agenda is looking at Certificate 3428-18, which we did in 2018. The applicant on that was Puyright McAnally, and they were representing Jeff Parker. This is a request to add an addendum to Lot 3 of Certificate 3428-18 at the request of the city council. This will be, this will be binding during the development process and easily found in the courthouse records. The addendum is provided below. The landscaping buffer and berms that currently exist on the west and south sides of the property described as Unit 3 of Certificate 3428-19, recorded in Mapbook 2019, starting at page 1,067 in the office of the Judge of Probate of Morgan County, shall remain in place, and the owners commit to taking all reasonable precautions to assure the landscaping buffer berm will continue to exist. This commitment will be binding on the current owners and its successors and assigns. Where the landscaping buffer berm does not exist along the east side of the property, the property owners agree to abide by the ordinance in place at the time of the site plan review, regardless of the number of parking spaces that may currently be in place. In the event this buffer or portion thereof is destroyed or removed for any reason, the following minimum standards will be used to replace the portion of the current buffer that is no longer in existence. A landscape plan showing an opaque buffer shall be submitted to the planning department. The landscape buffer will be required on the property shown as Unit 3 of Certificate 3428-19, recorded in Mapbook 2019 at page 1,067 in the office of the Judge of Probate of Morgan County. On the west, south, and east property lines, the plan shall meet the requirements of one, of one of the sections below, A, B, or C, and shall be approved and inspected by the city prior to requesting a building permit. It should be a 20-foot planted buffer that is at least six feet from the ground that functions as an opaque screen to consist of three large trees. Large trees grow to an average of 70 feet at maturity. Seven small trees, which grow to an average of 30 feet at maturity. And 20 shrubs, two-gallon size at planting, per 100 linear feet. A 12-foot berm landscaped area with a maximum height of four feet, consisting of two large trees. Large trees grow to an average of 70 feet at maturity. Eight small trees grow to an average of 30 feet at maturity. And 30 shrubs, two-gallon size at planting, per 100 linear feet. Or a five-foot fenced or walled area with a minimum height of six feet, which is 100% opaque and includes landscaping of 20 evergreen shrubs, two-gallon size at planting, per 100 linear feet. No plant that appears on the nuisance tree list in the city of Decatur zoning ordinance can be used. Maintenance of the landscaping buffer shall be the responsibility of the owner of the property shown as Unit 3 of Certificate 3428-19, recorded in Mapbook 2019, starting at page 1,067 in the office of the Judge of Probate of Morgan County, or as may be subsequently subdivided. A site plan drawn by a design professional shall be provided to the planning commission to obtain their approval when existing buildings are renovated or any use that would impact the site with or without a structure, including expansion of an existing building and/or new structures are built. The site plan shall include information about the approved existing buffer and potential new buffer along the east side. The buffer for the east side, where none currently exists, shall be on the property line and comply with the current ordinance at the time of plan review, without regard to the number of parking spaces, and extend 10 feet either side of the proposed improvement or existing renovated building or existing modified use. There may be adjustments to the depth of the east side landscaping buffer by the technical review committee based on the amount of available space behind the existing buildings. Vehicles that are required to use the truck route as designed by the truck route ordinance shall use Fairgrounds Road to Modus Road and then to the Beltline Road as a preclearance route and be the responsibility of the truck drivers to observe. In addition, other routes may be approved under the current truck route ordinance by written approval from the police traffic division in compliance with the mentioned ordinance. The recommendation from the technical review committee on the zoning committee is that we approve this request and add this addendum to Unit 3.
One thing on, on number two in parentheses, I think I heard you say, including expansion of existing buildings, and this says existing businesses.
I'm sorry.
So is that's clear, it's including expansion of existing businesses, correct?
Yes, sir. I apologize.
No problem. I may have heard it wrong.
And it, it's important that we move this forward only because the public hearing on the rezoning is April 6th, and we would like to be able to inform the council at that time that this addendum has been adopted, signed, and recorded. Oh, I gotta keep going.
I think one form of information is certain to the rezoning, the recording.
Okay.
Yeah. So what Mr. Terry stated was this draft is subject to the rezoning that is pending now with the council on this piece of property.
That's correct. The next request is a certificate to subdivide at 3114 Willabend Road Southeast on the west side of Willabend Road, south of Heather Lane. We are asking to amend the approval that we gave last month and create two lots of 2.85 acres and one acre. The property is in a mixed neighborhood, future land use on Willabend Road, and is currently zoned Ag 1 or agricultural. There are three conditions, one point of information, a signed survey for recording, a signed letter from the property owner requesting the subdivision, and a check made out to the judge of probate for recording. Next item is a certificate to consolidate. They are asking to consolidate 2.78 acre tracts into one 1.56 acre tract. The property is located on the east side of Hickory Hills Road, south of Lower River Road. The applicant is Rami Ellenberg representing Lindy, Christopher, and Jeffrey Kepley, and the current zoning is Ag-one. Proposed land use is residential, the One Decatur future land use is residential low density, the One Decatur street topology, Hickory Hills Road is a local street. There are four conditions and one point of information. We will need a check made out to the judge of probate for the recording fees, to provide a letter from the property owner requesting the subdivision, to provide three state plane coordinates, and to provide a copy of the deed. Next item is Certificate 3478-20. The applicant is Puyright McAnally representing Gregory and Alicia Wooten. They are asking to adjust the lot lines between, on a lot on A-Day Road, west side of Pleasant Hill Road, and it's a thirteen-point-two-eight acre tract, and they are creating two tracts of nine-point-two-nine acres and three-point-nine-nine acres. Property is located outside the corporate limits of Decatur. The proposed land use is low-density residential. We actually did go out in this area with the One Decatur plan and show low-density residential there and the Decatur street topology, both roads are local streets. There are six conditions and one point of information. To provide a signed and sealed survey for recording, payment of the recording fees with a check made out to the judge of probate, to provide a letter from the property owner requesting the subdivision, to provide three state plane coordinates, subject to approval of the legal description by the county engineer, to dedicate a thirty-foot drainage utility and telecommunications easement fifteen feet either side of the electric line along A-Day Road. The point of information is any relocation of utilities will be at the owner's expense. Next item is Certificate 3479-20. The applicant is Puyright McAnally for Parker Real Estate. They are asking to look to consolidate 3729, 3733, and 3737 Southwood Trail Road Southwest. It's on the west side of Southwood Trail. And to one 3.19 acre tract. Property is currently zoned Ag-one agricultural. The one, the proposed land use is low-density residential, the One Decatur future land use is low-density residential, and Southwood Trail Road is a local street. There are four conditions and one point of information. To provide a signed and sealed survey for recording, payment of the recording fees with a check made out to the judge of probate, to provide a letter from the owner requesting the subdivision, and to provide three state plane coordinates. Certificate 3480-20. Applicant is Puyright McAnally for Roger and Geraldine Minor. There is an error in your agendas that says that's just 12.54 acres, which is incorrect. They are consolidating four tracts into one tract of 167.07 acres. Property is located at 5301 Indian Hills Road Southeast on the west side of Indian Hills Road, north of Burleson Mountain Road in an Ag-one agricultural zoning district. The proposed land use is low-density residential, the One Decatur future land use is rural edge agricultural, and Indian Hills Road is a neighborhood connector. There are four conditions and one point of information. To provide a signed and sealed survey for recording, payment of the recording fees with a check made out to the judge of probate, to provide a letter from the owner requesting the subdivision, and to provide three state plane coordinates. Certificate 3481-20. Applicant is Puyright McAnally for Charles and Deanna Knox. They are asking to adjust the property lines at 3418 South Chapel Hill Road, on the east side of South Chapel Hill Road, south of Chapel Hill Road. They will be ending up with a 1.38 acre tract and an 11.16 acre tract. The property is currently zoned Ag-two agricultural. The proposed land use here is low-density residential, the One Decatur future land use is residential low-density, the One Decatur street topology, Chapel Hill Road and South Chapel Hill Road are both neighborhood connectors. There are four conditions and one point of information. To provide a signed and sealed survey for recording, payment of the recording fees with a check made out to the judge of probate, to provide a letter from the owner requesting the subdivision, and to provide three state plane coordinates. The next item is the Wilshire Development. They are asking to subdivide 38.03 acres into 129 R-three single-family residential lots. The current zone is RMH Residential Single Family Manufactured Housing, M-one Light Manufacturing, and outside the corporate limits. As you will recall, there are three rezonings on this request that we've already talked about. Property is located at the east side of Central Avenue, north of Ryan Drive Southwest. The proposed land use is residential single-family medium density. The One Decatur future land use is flex employment, mixed neighborhood, and residential low-density. And Central Avenue is a city connector. We have five conditions and four points of information. Please provide a general idea of the phases for this subdivision and the order of development, approval and completion of pre-zonings, rezonings, and annexations, remove the heavy black line along the eastern property line or label it and identify its purpose, label and locate both gas lines that are in the same easement, DU and American Midstream, and DU will approve that, to continue the easement along the gravel road that leads to the retention pond. Points of information are any relocation of utilities will be at the owner's expense, provide a buffer that is opaque between the railroad tracks and the subdivision, TVA retains right-of-way of electric line thirty-seven and a half feet on each side for a seventy-five foot total. Concerns about the overhead power line easement, flat notes will be requested on the final plat that indicate that construction is not permitted in the easement, and this is to include pools, sheds, gazebos, et cetera. And this, the easement itself is in deed book 223 at page 403. The last item on the consent agenda is Site Plan Review 596-20. The applicant is Jerry L. Smith for Jackson Plumbing. They are asking to, for site plan approval, to build a 5,000-square-foot storage building at 4504 Highway 31 South. The proposed land use is for a plumbing company. The One Decatur future land use is rural edge agricultural with flex employment across the street. The One Decatur street topology is that Highway 31 is a workhorse. There are no conditions on this one and only one point of information that any relocation of utilities will be done at the owner's expense.
Okay, if there is anyone from the public that wishes to speak to any of these cases on the consent agenda, please call 256-341-4715. 256-341-4715 to make comments on any of the cases that Mrs. Smith just read off. Do we have any emails that were sent in?
No, sir, we do not.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to any of these cases? Not, we will sit tight for the three-minute camera.
We'd like to take a moment and tell you about how we handled the meetings this month. Everything was done via phone and the TRC in particular had an adventure, but we worked through it. We're able to come up with an agenda and a meeting that seems to have worked and we appreciate everyone's help and cooperation on this.
Yes.
Are there any comments or questions from anyone on the commission? Do we have a motion to approve all of these requests?
Motion to approve? Second.
A motion by Mr. Borden, second by Mr. Culpepper. All in, please call the row.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Borden?
Yes.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Mr. Culpepper?
Yes.
Mr. Pike?
Yes.
If there's no other business to be brought before the commission, do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
All in favor, state, huh?
Aye.
We are adjourned.